Good morning. I'd like to call to order this work session of the Southampton Town Board on this 13th day of May 2021. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the work session.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
Which is as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sundee, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skiavoni. Excellent.
All right, and is Ryan with us too?
Yes, yes.
All right, excellent. So we're gonna start today with Ryan. At 10:15, I'm gonna ask the board to recess our work session. We're gonna start a meeting of the Hampton Bay's Water District, and then after that, we'll come back into our work session. So Ryan Murphy, our Public Safety Director, will update us on COVID. COVID matters, Ryan. Do you want to come on?
Sure. Thanks Supervisor. It's a relatively quick update. I mean, thankfully, we are in a position where I've really start to have a lot of good news for us, and that's, you know, that the numbers continue to go. The last reported positivity rates for Suffolk County on May 11th were at 1.1% of the tested individuals came back as positive cases. So we are drastically reduced from where we had been just a couple of months back. Hospital presence and admissions and COVID-related illnesses in the hospital are down significantly. I will say, you know, as of the 11th, we still had a COVID-related fatality within Suffolk County. So as we continue to talk about the the good news here, it's important to remember that there are still susceptible individuals out there. There are still cases of COVID. When we when we get, you know, focus on the the bright side of this and everything, we can't completely dismiss the safety precautions that need to still be adhered to and everything. But we are definitely trending in in a really good and solid right direction on this. As of yesterday, the 12th, the State Department of Health is reporting that for Suffolk County, we have about 597,000 people who have completed the vaccination series. So about a third of our population in Suffolk County is completely done with vaccination. There are about 744,000 people that so an additional almost 200,000 people that have at least started the series with with one dose of two. So about 50.3% of the population with at least one dose, 66.2% of the 16 and overpopulation with at least one dose as per the state stats. So we're really, we're in good shape. We're trending in the right direction. Numbers are down. Things continue to open up. As of the 19th of this month, gathering numbers go up even a little bit higher to 500 mark outdoors and indoor numbers increase for nonessential gatherings. So I really, that's what I have here right now is is good news. Again, I think we need to just make sure that we are anything that we're putting out there to the public and to the community. We're stressing that people, A, continue to follow the mask mandates and and the social distancing protocols whenever possible. We want to make sure that that 1% goes down to hopefully 0%. And the only way we're going to do that is if we continue to follow the protocols a little bit longer. But we also want to stress to people to have patience. We are coming into a time period where we could potentially have some of those same negative interactions about mask wearing and social distancing that we had back at the beginning of the pandemic, where, you know, there are places that you don't have to, places that you do have to. And we need people to be very patient and tolerant, and we need them to be understanding of the different levels of immunity and susceptibility that exist amongst their fellow residents and community members. And, you know, wear it when you need to. If you're if you're somebody that has a greatest susceptibility and you have a mask on and you see other people outdoors that are socially distanced, you know, don't panic that they don't have it on if they're with a couple of their friends and it's in an outdoor environment and stuff. You can continue to wear your mask if that's, you know, your safety and your comfort level too, even in those types of settings where people can start to take them off a little bit more. So we need everybody to continue to work together to get 1% to go to 0%. But also, it's reasonable now to start to be a little bit happy that we're starting to have things open back up again a little bit and starting to achieve a little bit more normalcy. Let's just, you know, be careful as we continue to move in a normal direction.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. You know, and as the board knows, I check the numbers all the time as well for the town of Southampton and for all the towns. And the numbers really are coming down. I think the last time I reported, we were seeing about five cases a day on average in Southampton. We are down to one case or one and a half cases. We're very close to zero. If we keep to this trajectory by next week, I expect that there'll be no cases of positive, no positive cases. So so yesterday on the entire South Fork, I think there were two cases. So that's a that's that's good. And we're, you know, we're in the realm of contact tracing now. So it's when you only have, you know, if we get down to zero and a week later, there's one case, there's not a lot of pathways with so many people vaccinated that we should be able to, you know, find out all the individuals that the one person came in contact with and make sure that they take necessary precautions. So we're really getting to the point where things are going to open up. I I decided not to extend the emergency order beyond May 15. So in two days, the current emergency order for the town of Southampton will expire. That emergency order has been in place in one form or another for the last 14 months. That is a major step forward. There's still a state emergency order, but I don't see the need to have the local emergency order. Town Hall is open. We're full staffing. Our senior centers are opening. We don't need the emergency order to have our boards meet via Zoom because that's covered by the governor's emergency order. So I don't really see the need to maintain the emergency order. So that's that's a sign that we're moving in the right direction. I cannot believe we've had a 14-month state of emergency locally. Never would have thought that could happen. But, you know, that it looks like we are, we're getting to the other side of this. That is, of course, not to give people the false impression that the pandemic is over. It's not over. It's probably going to be with us for quite a bit longer. And COVID is going to be with us and, you know, will rear its ugly head every once in a while. So we're gonna have to be mindful of it. But I'm hoping that with the summertime approaching, Memorial Day approaching, that, you know, the much-needed recreational opportunities will be available for people. We'll have our parks opened, and there'll be events to go to, and you'll be able to go to a bar and have a drink without having to eat food. And life will be a little bit closer to normal, and I think people need it. So anyway, with that, any other questions for Ryan? All right. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. So at 10:15, which is pretty close, we're gonna start the other meeting. So what I'll do is I'll make a motion to recess our town board meeting. I don't know that we're gonna need to run all the way to 11:00 with the Hampton Bay's Water District. Rick, do you have a sense of how long that meeting's gonna go?
I expect at least a half hour.
All right, all right. So let's then let's recess to 11:00 and and then we'll we'll start the other meeting of the Water District. We just have to sort of change tapes and change hats, so to speak, with the town board. So let me make a motion to recess our work session to 11 o'clock, 11 a.m. Second by Councilman Skiavoni, all in favor? Good afternoon. I'd like to call the work session of the town board back to order on this 13th day of May 2021. Okay. Jim, do I need to do a new roll call? I guess so, because we had a recess. So let's do a quick roll call. Sundee? Sundee, are you muted?
Sorry Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skiavoni. Okay, all good to go.
Okay, cool. The next item on our agenda is what's called Parcel B at the SYS facility at the North Sea Athletic Complex. And I we want to invite Kevin O'Connell in, who's the SYS President. Charlie, can we allow him in?
Yes, he's coming.
All right.
Anyone else?
I don't I don't have anybody else on my agenda, but maybe when Kevin is on.
I see a few hands here. Let's see. Terry Kirnne.
Okay.
And Aiden Wood is also trying to
Okay.
join as well.
All right, got it. Okay, they're all in.
And I'm going to excuse myself now. I have a meeting that I have to attend. I will be back in with you later.
Okay. We waiting for anyone else? Aiden?
I think Aiden's, yeah, Aiden just signing on.
And Kevin, are you gonna lead this presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, I can lead in you if you want. So as the board's aware of, SYS is under contract with the town to run the athletic facility at the park. Not all the facilities, but the building where you're all familiar with that has lots of lots of different recreational activities, but also part of that understanding. There's an out parcel, we're calling Parcel B, that was reserved for their use. They've already, there's a similar parcel that's already in use. That's where the Future Stars property is located, the tennis bubble. And behind that tennis bubble is Parcel B. It's sort of in that corner. And SYS approached me about developing some additional athletic facilities, primarily racket sports, but also some basketball. And they would like, they're seeking our permission to to construct these facilities. They're not, I don't believe, asking for additional funding for their operations. We do not only provide the land and the building that they occupy, but we also provide some yearly funding for both operations and capital. So with that, I will turn things over to the SYS President, Kevin O'Connell. And Kevin, if you can introduce your team as well, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much for the time Supervisor and the introduction. My name is Kevin O'Connell. I'm the president, current president of the SYS Board. We also have Teresa Kirnne on the line, who's our secretary, and Aiden Wood, who's our treasurer. And we just, you know, wanted to thank you for for taking the time to meet with us. As a board, we are super excited to be approaching our 20th anniversary as an organization. As many of you know, SYS is set up as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to manage and operate the facility that Supervisor Schneiderman described. And in two years, we'll be approaching our, we'll be at our 20th anniversary. And, you know, we're just excited as a board and as a team for the wildly successful, in our opinion, partnership that we've been able to have with the town of Southampton, and truly appreciate that partnership. What we'd like to do as a board is expand to our last undeveloped portion of the property that was set aside for us in the management agreement that was side, that was signed. That's Parcel B. It's the west parcel, the southwest parcel of Parcel B. And so if you're up at SYS, we're talking about the the last remaining field to the west of the parking lot. I would describe it as behind the two bubbles as you're as you're driving into the facility. Our plan would be to expand that facility to include two outdoor regulation-sized tennis courts, two outdoor high school-sized basketball courts, two regulation paddle tennis courts, and three outdoor padel courts. Padel is another racket sport, and I'd be happy to go into the details of that for those of you who don't know the sport. The SYS Board of Directors has decided to move forward with the plan as we believe it'll help us to continue to fulfill our mission of providing a safe place to play, dream, grow, and learn for all of the residents of the town of Southampton. And frankly, the East End more broadly, we have a tremendous amount of use in our facility and are really proud of all the programming that we've put together over the last 18 years, but especially over the late last 18 months. The facility has gotten a tremendous amount of use since we've been able to reopen in in June of 2020. These new facilities will help us expand our existing programs, and they'll also help us allow some new programs possibly to come in, especially padel, which is a new sport for us. And so today, we are asking for the town board support as we're required to do by our management agreement, Article 10. If we're gonna make any changes to the the plots of land that we were provided, we do need town board approval. And from town board approval, we'd obviously move to a planning phase. And so that's why we're we're here to ask, ask for your permission and blessing to do that. So how are we gonna do this? SYS is not, as Supervisor Schneiderman laid out, we are not asking for any additional funding from the town. We are proposing and have started, we've launched a campaign to raise $750,000 through fundraising, and that would be to develop Phase A of Parcel B. So we kind of broke our project into two phases, but we're asking for permission for the whole thing. Phase A would be the two outdoor tennis courts and the two outdoor basketball courts, and include all excavation, draining, and fencing that would be required for those those four courts. Phase B would be the paddle tennis and the padel, which we would hope to raise another $750,000. So that's, that's how we plan to plan to fund the project. We've hired Eris Design to help us with the design and drafting of the of the tennis courts and to also help us with the planning and construction. And, you know, I think it's worth noting that we've already secured funding for the planning phase as well as some additional capital to to kick off the campaign. And so our fundraising campaign is active and and ready to fulfill our mission. We've probably, we've raised close to $100,000 already. And so just to make sure we're we're super clear, we're not asking for any additional money. The town provides $200,000 of operating budget to SYS annually and $50,000 for a capital campaign. Neither of those dollar amounts will be used for this project, and we're not asking for any additional fundraising. This is an SYS project. We are just simply asking for your permission to move forward with expanding our our footprint on the existing on the existing parcel. I will stop there and see if you have any questions about anything I've presented so far.
A couple of questions, right?
Yes, sir.
Right from the start. So first, you're not only looking for permission for these courts, but you're looking to expand the area where the least hold is to include an additional 30 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So I was gonna, I was gonna ask that. That's my, that's our second ask. And Janice was kind enough to forward two documents to all the board members this morning. The Parcel B, as it is set by the management agreement signed in 2003, is honestly slightly too narrow to build out exactly what we want. So we're asking for an additional 30 feet of land, the full extent of Parcel B. And we're asking that so that we can build out this final, this final section and have all the courts safely distanced from each other. I will say that the majority of that 30 feet, the entire length of Parcel B is already cleared land. So there's maybe 10 or 15 feet that we have to excavate a tiny bit, but this is already cleared property. And so if you were walking on that last field today, you would think that that portion was already part of SYS. It's not, you know, we're not asking for additional clearing. The, so if you're at SYS, what's part of our Parcel B is exactly where the fence line extend on the east and west side of the existing tennis courts. And so we're asking for 30 feet more on the west side. And then really, again, safety is the most important reason. A basketball court is actually quite a bit wider than a tennis court. And so for us to fit two basketball courts and two tennis courts in safely with proper distancing, both between the tennis courts and between the tennis courts and the basketball courts, another 30 feet would really be an ideal width of that entire span. So that was, that was the second ask.
Is there excavation required to achieve this? And if so, are you proposing a retaining wall in that corner?
So again, most of that 30 feet on the on the full span span is cleared already and does not need any excavation. There's a small portion, which again, we've we've hired Eris Design, and they can help with that at the the very southwest corner of the parcel. There's probably about 15 feet of a hill that needs to be excavated and leveled a little bit. But but the vast majority, I'd say, you know, 90 to 95% of this is already properly cleared. We would need to do some excavation for draining purposes, but not not any land clearing other than that very southwestern corner.
All right. My second question is, what is padel?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna get a prop for you here. Okay, so padel is, this is a padel racket. It's a foam racket. And padel is a tennis, but it's just shy of a tennis ball-sized ball. It's a racket sport. It is an outdoor sport for the for the most part, and it's a two-on-two racket game, which the best way to describe it is it's a combination between tennis and squash. And so it's a 20-meter by 30-meter court that is, you know, has caging around it, including a glass back on both sides, just like a squash court would or a racquetball court. And you can play it off the back. And it's a, it's a very popular game in Europe and South America. And and so SYS was approached. So as a board, we were, we were planning and hoping to expand this portion of the field. And at the same time, we were approached by a padel group that that offered to help finance, assuming we could get permitting and planning through, help finance the the building of these courts. And so it's a different racket sport. It's, it's a racket sport that's very well suited for middle-aged people. So it's a little less demanding than tennis in terms of your side to side and lateral movement. It's a sport that can be played outside. And frankly, some of the board members and I, there's a private course on someone's house in Bridhampton that we, we went and played with the group, and they put on a little demonstration for us. And all of us that were there, we're really interested. It's a, it's a fun sport. It's a fast sport, but not as demanding as tennis. And it's an outdoor sport, which is, which is wonderful.
And you're proposing one, three of them?
Yes, sir. And so these courts, the courts are relatively simple to put in, but they're courts that, because of their construction, are great multi-use courts. And so they're amazing for kids tennis. So padel would be, they're made for padel. And everything, everything we're building here, we're trying to set up to be multi-use, right? Because we have so many different groups that utilize our facility, so many different groups that come to SYS for many different reasons. And so padel, they're set up for padel, but they're great for children's tennis, right? They're a smaller court, the net's the same height, and there's walls. And so balls aren't rolling all over the court. They're really, really wonderful for instruction for youth tennis.
All right. I want to ask one more question. I'm gonna turn it over to the town board for questions. But the last one I have is probably the most important of the questions. So, so the mission of SYS, when the town entered into an agreement with SYS, is really to provide affordable recreational activities to the community. And now I'm, I go to SYS almost every day, but there's a portion that's run by Future Stars that I don't go to. I used to go to when my son was taking tennis lessons. And the rates at Future Stars are not controlled. They are whatever, you know, Future Stars wants to charge. So I don't view that parcel, maybe we'll call it Parcel A, as really part of the mission of SYS, other than it's probably rented to Future Stars, and that provides some revenue for SYS to keep everything else affordable. So what I really want to know with all these racket sports, to what degree are these going to be public versus shut off to the community and become used by Future Stars as revenue generator? You know, not available to public, not affordable, and not really to me in line with the the mission of SYS? So can can you answer that?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so your mission, you're exactly right on the mission of SYS, right? Are, we are trying to provide access for many different groups to utilize our facilities. And so as SYS was set up, we operate in several different ways. So how does SYS provide all these services for the residents of the town of Southampton with, frankly, you know, generous funding from the town, but we provide tremendous amount of programming. And so the way we do that programming is by by charging fees, right? So SYS is a public-private partnership, but to utilize SYS facilities, you have to be a member. And you can be, there's many different memberships. You can be a fitness member. You can be a member to the building. You could be a squash member. You can come in and join fitness classes. You can belong to a youth basketball team, and that organization rents courts from SYS, right? But the way SYS is able to provide all these services is by having a very diverse list of revenue streams, of which Future Stars is one of them. Future Stars is one of our permanent tenants. We do have several other permanent tenants, including gymnastics and the squash group. All of those have lease agreements. And so Future Stars is one of our, one of our permanent tenants that utilizes those courts full year round. And we have a lease agreement with them for their winter time and a separate lease agreement in the summer. And so these new courts that we're going to provide are going to operate the same as every other SYS membership. These courts will be managed by SYS. They will be open to SYS members. They will be open to be rented by outside groups, just like our SYS courts are today. So there are times where SYS members, as an example, can come up, they come up with their own basketball, they're a member of the facility, they can go and utilize the red court or the blue court and shoot around. If Sag Harbor School, as one example, is renting those courts, then that SYS member unfortunately can't use that court at that existing time, right? So there's open time on the courts and there's rented time on the courts. And that's exactly, frankly, how these outdoor courts are going to work. They're going to be managed by SYS the same way we we manage all of the other courts, where there's times where they're open and there're time where they're rented by groups. And so, you know, Future Stars has those eight tennis courts that are, that they permanently rent. They also rent out the entire facility for their summer camps, right? And so if you were to go and try to use a basketball court at noon on a Wednesday in the middle of July, a regular SYS member would would not have access to those courts because the camps are being run there. And so that could be the case some days on these new courts. But but they're, they're still open. They're not, I just want, they're not public um, I just want, they're not public courts. They're open to S Y S members, just like every other part of the facility that is managed by S Y S on a regular basis. Uh, and so we, you know, it's, it's not going to be managed by our permanent tenant, any of our permanent tenants. Some of our permanent tenants may utilize those courts at different times. And I, I hope that answers it. I'm, you know, happy to go into any more detail, but the idea is S Y S is managing these courts. Our members have access to them. Do they have unlimited permanent access? No, just like they don't have unlimited permanent access to any of the facilities at S Y S. And so if there's an open court, they can use it. But if it's rented by another group, then it's rented by another group.
Right. So the question is, what percentage of the time is it rented to S Y S? You say just for certain portions of the day in the summertime?
Will be rented to future stars?
Yeah.
Uh, the courts will likely be utilized for some portions of the day during the summer for future stars. I would say yes. And so the other example is our squash courts and squash is run by an outside group. And they have a summer camp that goes on and we've allocated time for our squash members. Either before that camp starts, there's an hour in the middle of the day, or at the end of the day, when our members can go in and use those courts. And so it would be managed the exact same way for all, the way, the way the entire facility is managed in the summer.
Kevin, how do you determine the rate that future stars, because they're not paying for the construction, right? So you're going to just rent it the way you'd rent it to any other group. How do you determine what rate they will charge for these facilities? You will charge, S Y S will charge, future stars.
Right. So, um, uh, uh, so future stars pays us a fixed fee for the existing courts. It is a revenue share agreement on all the, it's a, it's a minimum plus a revenue share agreement. And so S Y S and thus the town and all our residents benefit when future stars is having a successful camp. Uh, that is on a five-year rolling lease. Um, and so that's, that's how we've determined it with, with future stars. It's an existing lease that we have a fixed fee for the winter rental. It's a uh, a, a minimum fee for the summer camps plus a, uh, a revenue share agreement. And so you know, frankly, future stars has been an amazing tenant for us. Uh, they help with a, a huge portion of our operating budget each year. And, and underwrite frankly, so much of our, our, our existing programs that they've been a, a huge partner with us. Um, they are willing to participate in the construction of the new courts, but they're, you know, we're, we're going to try to do it through fundraising. And so their, their access to the courts is not going to be determined by, you know, how much uh, capital they put into the, into the building of the courts. So the rates, the only thing I'll say is the rates and then Aiden, you can add anything if you want to jump in. The rates, the rates are a, you know, Scott Johnson is the director of S Y S, uh, the executive director of S Y S and we ask him to manage and run that facility. That's not something that the board of S Y S typically uh, gets into the weeds on for, for any given rate for courts or not. You know, Scott's, Scott's managing a, a, a business on his own and we give him that responsibility.
Just to, uh, hi, good morning, everybody. How are you? Aiden Wood, the longtime treasurer of S Y S. Um, just to interject and, and emphasize to the board that with these, uh, lease agreements that we've gone into with the, with the for-profit entities, uh, we have had a successful relationship with them because they offer scholarships to underprivileged, um, children. And no questions asked. Um, it's all under the radar, but they are very generous. And when the board or management at S Y S, uh, goes to the owners of these particular for-profit companies, they are, they, they listen to us. They, no questions asked, yes, they're involved. So.
I actually have some of those figures, Aiden, just, you know, I, I asked, so in two thousand and nineteen, they supplied over thirty-six thousand dollars in camp scholarships for, for Southampton Town residents. Uh, that was eleven children given a total of fifty-one weeks of camp. And so future stars has been, to Aiden's point, an amazing partner on that front, donating over, over thirty-six thousand dollars of, of, uh, free services essentially for, for scholarships.
So it, I mean, it sounds like you have a good tenant and I'm familiar with future stars. I have to approach this as, you know, a fiduciary to the town. So there's town-owned ground basically and land, land in Southampton, as you know, is extremely valuable.
Yes, sir.
And you know, you're, a future stars is getting access to land in a community, an affluent community, which they can, you know, generate revenue on, on a for-profit side. And it, it sounds like, you know, they're responsible and good business people. I have to just look at it in, you know, the types of questions that go through my mind are, okay, you have a revenue share to S Y S. Who is, who is checking the books at future stars? Um, is this a competitive process with future stars or they automatically get, you know, the, can you entertain other bids for the summer camp operation? It sounds like it's automatic to future stars. Um, it sounds like I'm not hearing that you're going to increase the base rental with the new facilities. You're only going to get additional revenue share from the profits. Um, you know, Scott, if Scott's the one who is auditing the books, um, I would ask for additional oversight because, you know, a member of his family uh, is the manager of future stars. So I just have to, you know, I, I, I do trust everybody involved and, um, I, and Scott does a great job over there. I just have to, uh, you know, I'm the chief fiduciary officer for the town.
Get it. I get it.
Make sure that everything, you know, is carefully, um, controlled, monitored. Uh, and there's adequate financial oversight. So if you have a revenue sharing agreement, we have to know that every transaction, somebody has to know that every transaction there is recorded, that there's no cash, or if there's cash, that the cash, um, transactions are properly recorded. It, it creates a, a complicated situation, but you guys aren't the town. You're a separate not-for-profit.
Yes, sir.
But the land itself is the town. So, um, you know, I, i- it, it's a complexity there that, uh, I, I don't like being the bad guy. You know, I don't like being the guy who raises the issues, but it, it is what the public elected me to do. It's, it's a taxpayer asset. They own the land. And I want to make sure that no one is unduly profiting on the private side from a town asset. Do you understand?
I, I, sir, we've fully, we fully understand. Uh, our financials are audited every single year by Sabal and Oplinger. Uh, Aiden can speak to, you know, that process and has been involved in that process since the get-go if you want more details on it. Uh, you know, I think, I think part of, and I, I fully understand, and as a board, we understand uh, those issues and discuss those issues, right? What I think we don't want to discount in that process is how wildly successful overall S Y S has been and what a huge asset it is to Southampton Town to have a facility like this. And part of why we're able to add, you know, acts, have, provide access to tens of thousands of people a year is because we've been very creative in how we generate revenue. Uh, and so.
On that, Kevin, I just want to say.
I know. I just want to, I just want to make sure.
Really thankful that you guys are there. You know, our parks department is already overwhelmed and to have a not-for-profit partner managing a facility that we own is a great thing.
Yeah.
So, okay.
No, I appreciate that. And, and, and I don't know, Aiden, if you want to say anything, but we, we do have fully audited financials that are available every single year.
Uh, just, uh, as an aside to the board, I've been involved with this organization since the get-go over twenty years. Thankfully, the building has been, has had its CEO since June twenty-sixth of two thousand and three. I have people from other communities who, who know that I am the treasurer. They call me or they see me and I go, how did you do this? We want, we want to do this in the town of East Hampton. We want to do this in the town of Southold. We want to do this in the town of Riverhead. And I'm quite honest with them. I said, this will never be duplicated again. I mean, none of you, none of you on this board were, were, were part of the original, we're, we're part of the, uh, the original agreement. But I, I think that we have proven to ourselves, um, and to, and to the board that we can manage this facility. Um, years ago, there, when we, when we first formed, there was a very influential person in town hall who said, I agree that the first board will be able to build this, but who's going to be the next board? And I think that we have shown through the years that we can continue and have this great relationship with the town of Southampton.
No, absolutely. You know, actually, I hope it is replicable. You know, we have a group that's trying to build an indoor swimming pool, as you know, I, I hope that they're successful. I would love to see a facility like S Y S west of the canal. Um, because it's not that accessible to the entire community and we probably should have a similar facility with an indoor track and you know, indoor soccer and courts and like S Y S, but, uh, hopefully that will happen. So what you guys have done a tremendous job in raising donations to build the facility. Um, it, it's a great success story. And as I said, I, I use S Y S pretty much every day. Um, so it's a really well-maintained facility, really well-operated facility. So, um, it's a, it's a good thing. And thank you for, for, uh, all of your volunteer work related to it. So let's, let's jump back to the board now. And then really there is a request. Um, at some point, there'd be, I guess, a resolution authorizing me to enter into or modify into agreement to modify the, uh, agreement with S Y S to allow the additional thirty feet and the construction of these facilities. So, uh, and I, I don't even know, I think there's a lot of years left on the underlying agreement. So I don't think that's an issue. Um, sometimes that becomes an issue when you're trying to raise donations and you have a a short period of guarantee. I think you have a long period of guarantee.
Yes, sir. We still have eighty-two years on the, uh, on the original management agreement.
Yeah, that's a long period. So, uh, all right. So board, um, let me turn it to you guys. Uh, anybody have any concerns, questions related to the expansion?
Yeah, I have a, a question. Uh, good afternoon, uh, Jerry, Aiden and Kevin. Uh, Kevin's question is, is for you. Um, while you're here, uh, the, uh, programming at S Y S, how many students or how many children are served by the S Y S programming on an annual basis? And how many adults? Do you have those numbers broken down?
Sure. So I can provide the numbers that are actual S Y S members. What I can't provide a hard number on is how many people utilize the facility through other groups. And so using two thousand and nineteen numbers, S Y S had five hundred S Y S members. That means you can come up and utilize the facility and the track. We, we, uh, we, uh, sold almost twenty-nine hundred day passes for the facility. Then we have our fitness membership, which is another, you know, which is the whole fitness room. It's a separate membership. We had almost fifteen hundred fitness members and sold almost six hundred day passes for, for that facility. Uh, and then the squash in two thousand and nineteen, which has been a huge growth, uh, portion for us over the last eighteen months, had ninety squash m- members and sold ninety-five day passes. And so that's only people that are actually utilizing S Y S. That doesn't count. You come up for dance because that's a, that's someone utilizing the dance program at S Y S. That's not coming up for archery. You did archery through S Y S. That's not coming up for all these other programs and doesn't include, you know, the basketball leagues you run. And so if we had to put a hard number on it, it'd be, you know, tens, tens of thousands of people through the facility every single year. Um, but we can't, you know, we don't, we don't have a hard number on how many bodies have physically walked through the space.
And we were doing school programs prior to the pandemic. That were very successful.
Correct.
Um, and you anticipate an increase in usage of the facility with this, with what you're asking today?
Ab- absolutely. Uh, you know, we think.
Parking could handle it and you, you've done all those studies or, you know.
Parking, the parking should be fine unless there's, you know, the, the, the parking is not an issue from our perspective. Uh, and, you know, we do think there's going to be, we actually think it's going to broaden the number of people that'll come and it extends the season. Because some of those outdoor, um, racket sports, specifically paddle and padel, are played throughout the year, even in the winter. Uh, and, and, and welcome an older demographic. And so S Y S, Southampton Youth Services is very youth-focused, but by providing some of these other uh, racket sports, we think we're actually going to broaden the, the number of people and the, the breadth of people that can come and utilize the facility.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, can you give us a, um, better idea of the amount of excavation in that southwest corner? I know you said it was nominal, but I'm just wondering, because it does look on the schematic here that it goes into the hill a little bit. So I'm just wondering. And you don't have to give it to us right now if you don't have it, but i- if I could see something on that and kind of similar to that question, for this extra thirty feet that you're requiring, um, would that be an amendment to the original agreement?
So I'll answer the second one first. Yeah, the thirty feet would be an amendment to the original management agreement. Uh, just like we've, we've made one or two other amendments along the way. And so that, that should be satisfied with the agreement. I'm going to defer, it looks like Steve from Ares Design is on. Uh, I don't want to answer specifically how much of that hill would need to be excavated. So I'd either defer to him if, if he's on or, or provide the detail in, in the future.
Sure. Uh, uh, this is Steve from Ares Design. Hi, hello, everybody. Uh, yes, so that area will need some of retainage. So we'd have to study how the retaining wall looks and how, um, what, what kind of clearing will be involved with that, but we try to keep it as minimal as possible. Um, but as we get a little further into deep detail, right now, this is fairly a schematic design. So we get, as we get further into detail, we can work out how that looks.
Okay.
It's a pretty steep hill back there.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
It's a favorite sledding channel. So I, we're going to have to find another place for people to.
Right.
I, I only had one question, just a quick question. Is it, do you plan to light this at all? The infrastructure for that?
So that was one of our, one of our questions for you was, uh, what would that entail as far as permitting and processing from, from your side? Our numbers to raise the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars does not include lighting. Um, but certainly that's something we'd consider depending on how the, the, the board, the town board felt about it. Um, you know, we, we would actually ask for you information on that as far as heights of lights and times to see if it were even feasible. Uh, but that's, that's one of the questions we actually had for you as a how much more that would add to the planning and processing.
And I, I would make a suggestion to the board and to the supervisor. I, I, I have some contractual questions relative to some of the fiduciary responsibilities we have. I think that should go into exec.
Yes, uh, I'm with you. Um, Kevin, you, you mentioned a number of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build all these courts. Some have glass walls, there's basketball. I, you know, we're, we're building some pickleball courts at the far end of the facility. I think four courts and it's costing us a quarter million dollars. Um, I have a, a hard time imagining how you could do that bit with prevailing wages. Um, I, I don't know that you guys can build on town property without paying prevailing wage.
Our, our quotes are all prevailing wage, sir. Abs- absolutely. And so uh, I can break down the budget for you if you want, but we did.
That's great. I really was, really at the heart of my question was, I was assuming that you probably weren't doing prevailing.
No, we are. So the.
I was, I, I, I didn't want to lay on the parade and tell you, you gotta pay prevailing wage.
As much as, yeah, no, we, uh, we are, you know, the, the, Aiden and Scott who have been through all these processes before with the, the, your predecessor town boards were adamant that, uh, prevailing wage prices had to be factored in to our budgeting, uh, and that there could be no in-kind services, which, you know, un- unfortunately.
I actually think there's a legal requirement that you pay prevailing wage. So uh, because it's town land, that just because it's leased doesn't get you around the state requirement. It's, it's not a town thing. It's really, it's a state law. So.
We are, we are fully aware. And so our budgeting, just so we, we're all, we'll, we'll, we'll put it out there, is seventy-five thousand for per- permitting and planning. A hundred thousand for excavation and drainage. And really a lot of that, again, the field is cleared, but there's some drainage issues that we need to figure out before we can put a asphalt down. And then four hundred and eighty thousand was the prevailing wage quote we got, uh, from a group to build the courts. And then eighty thousand dollars in fencing. And again, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand, well, that adds up to seven thirty-five. And so we rounded it to seven fifty for fundraising purposes. But that is just for the two tennis courts and two basketball courts. That is not include any of the other, any of the other courts. That would be a separate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the paddle and the padel courts.
Okay. And that also will have to be prevailing wage. So.
Absolutely. Everything will be done prevailing wage.
All right, that's good to hear. All right. So back to the board. Any other board members have questions about this?
Just curious what the space is being used for now.
Right now, it's it's cleared for a soccer field. It's not in great shape, and there are several other soccer fields in the area. And so we utilize it for some of our flag football games and and soccer rentals for the most part. As it's set up with no fencing and, you know, easy access, it's actually a really hard parcel of land for the S Y S team to manage because there's no fencing. And so we think developing it and adding the fencing will actually help us manage that property more efficiently, frankly.
But you wouldn't need to put a soccer field somewhere else on the property?
No, we have the grass field in the front. So as you drive up to S Y S, we wanted to keep that full grass field there. And so if you still wanted to run soccer leagues and flag football stays there, we still have that parcel. We think that as you drive up to S Y S, it's really nice to have that grass section right in the in the front. And that's far easier to maintain and in in better condition, frankly, than than the backfield. And so the backfield really has some drainage issues because of the hill that we talked about. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's not a huge revenue generator for us and not a, not a great place for programming. It's kind of thought of as a an afterthought or some other groups can use it, but it's not, it's not efficiently used right now.
Great. Thank you.
Is, do we need to involve the town engineer at all in this because of the proximity to our landfill? I I don't know if there's any venting issues or soil testing issues or anything like that. I hopefully there's not, but just one possible consideration that maybe somebody could bring Christine Fethan in and just make sure. But if it's already determined that this section of land is developable with structures, that the soils are stable, and then I guess, you know, maybe that's not a necessary step. But I'm I'm not that familiar with the landfill closure and whatever requirements might be in place at this site. So.
Yeah, my my impression was that all that was done when the facility was originally built, but I will again defer to Eris Design, who we've hired to do that work with the town as part of the planning process. And I think I think all that will be will be touched on then.
Okay. All right. Any any other questions? Okay. Is or is everybody comfortable with me bringing forth a resolution to allow the additional thirty feet as well as the construction of the additional athletic facilities? Does anybody have a problem with that? And we can debate it on the floor, but if are you guys okay, at least in having a conversation on the floor about that additional use?
Well, I, as I said before, I think there were some topics that needed to be discussed in that session. That's from my point of view.
Okay, that's fine.
And and I agree. In theory, I think it's great and I would love to support it. But I I agree with John that there's a couple of things that we probably need to discuss and exec.
Okay.
And hopefully it all work out.
Okay. So if we can work out whatever those issues are, then, you know, hopefully I'll be able to bring forward a resolution to modify the agreement.
Yeah, I I think it's basic questions. Just I'll leave it at that. They just need to be answered.
Because looking at the site plan, it looks like the existing tennis courts actually go into that thirty foot portion. And and these are the questions that I'd like to ask as well.
There's there's some storage units that are on that thirty feet currently.
And were there any modifications to our agreement for having those storage units on in that thirty foot area?
Not as I understand them.
We may have already done this, is what I'm thinking.
Well, I think that they probably are, they have some structures probably in violation. I I think that it's not just the storage trailer, but there there may be the air handlers that, you know, create the positive pressure for the tennis bubbles that are located in that area. But it's never been an issue before and it's it's cleared, the clearing is much larger there. So it's not, it's not an impact.
Right. And the topography is a little bit more conducive.
Right.
The storage unit, so those the shipping containers, can they be moved? Okay.
If, yeah.
Yeah, I I don't personally have a problem with the the extra thirty feet in that section. It really comes down to just that corner where the excavation is and whether we're willing to allow for for that court to be built in that corner by allowing for the excavation there. So, but we can discuss that.
And I'd certainly be happy to meet anyone up there to walk the property, just, you know, with us to see exactly what portion we're talking about in the corner there. If 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 that were ever a factor, I'd I'd be happy to meet you up there and walk that property together.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
All right. No, just a comment that I I like the design and and your programming up at S Y S. I think it's it's a great thing. And I think all of our kids have been involved in S Y S in one way or another. So thank you for that.
Thank you. That's very kind.
Okay. All right. So, you know, Kevin, I will get back with you guys. And, you know, I'm hoping we have a positive conversation with the board and we're able to move forward with this. So. All right. And thank you all, you know, Aiden and Arius Design and the others and Terry Kirn for for joining us. We'll let you guys go and then we're gonna move on in our work session.
Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so the next item, we're running a little bit behind in our schedule, is a follow-up discussion related to cannabis legalization in the town. We have a number of people. The town board had asked me to see if we can bring in some individuals on both sides of this issue to where we could ask questions, get some additional insight. As you know, New York State passed a law allowing recreational marijuana to be used legally and also for it to be sold. And left the towns with the towns and villages with the decision, a limited decision related to the sale within the municipality at dispensaries and at consumption lounges. And we've had a number of work sessions already on this topic. And we're going to continue this conversation. The board has till December thirty first of this year to decide whether it wants to opt out. We even have some questions still pending about different, you know, you could opt out of consumption lounges, you could opt out of dispensaries, you could opt out of both. There's still some questions about whether there's a mechanism to go directly onto the ballot or whether the petition, whether the public would have to petition to place it on the ballot. There's still some outstanding questions about deliveries and other things. We have a number of individuals who are with us on this call or this Zoom meeting. Let me see who is here now. Did we get? Well, I see Janice Shear is here. Michelangelo is here. I thought we were also having.
We need Charles to let Kim Laub and Dave Falcoski in.
Yeah, we need Dave Falcoski and Kim Laubey.
They are on their way. Anyone else?
So I think you guys all, probably all know these individuals. I have resumes in front of me. Kim, we know from her work with HUGS. We see HUGS in the background there, which works with a lot of at-risk kids, provides a lot of different counseling services and empowerment type of workshops. Works with a lot of the schools. Dave Falcoski is a local farmer. We've seen him at the farmer's market. We know that he's been an advocate for legalization of recreational marijuana for some time. He's sort of a local expert on this issue. And Janice Shear is here, our director of land management and development, land planning and development. And then Michelangelo Lieberman, who also works in that department, long-range planning is also here. So how do we want to start? Kim is obviously taking the the position. We're not really debating whether marijuana should be legal, right? So that already is this determined marijuana is legal recreationally. The only really decision before the board is whether we should opt out of consumption lounges, whether we should opt out of dispensaries. So that's really the decision. And then so Janice or Michael, Michelangelo, did you have an approach in terms of who's, how we're going to handle this section of the work session? Are we going to give each speaker a few minutes to present their position?
Yeah. Good morning, supervisor, members of the board and to our guests. Thanks for being here. Yes, I think the best approach would be for Kim to go first and just sort of give us an overview of her organization and and her sense of it. And then Dave from Open Minded Organics, he can fill us in because he's been really working with providing for the industry, at least the hemp industry and other considerations from the agricultural side of this. And I think we'll just, you know, our hope is that we get a robust conversation and a a good context for your deliberations. And we did give you a memo also that Mike had called up our case study towns in Massachusetts and talked to both chief of police in those two locations. And they gave us some some sense of how they felt about it. So you have that to consider. So, you know, just going forward, I think the best approach is to just have an open dialogue, but starting with Kim and then giving David the chance to respond would be most productive. And then obviously the board's questions.
Okay, so Kim, let's turn it over to you to do a brief introduction and presentation.
Sure. So thanks. And I want to be respectful of time because I think we're only slotted for a half hour. So I definitely want to honor your time and thank you for even joining in a conversation. I'm not a debater. I just represent the vulnerable populations that will most likely become impacted by this. For those of you who don't know, HUGS is a public health, community-based prevention agency. And so we don't do clinical work. We don't do treatment. We work with all communities from adults, youth, school systems, and look at how do we build individual protective factors. And we do that in a variety of ways. One, by, of course, education. Two, by looking at how do we get families, individuals, schools, communities and businesses to take on healthy practice and to set sound policy. And then how do we match that with enforcement? And that speaks very much to this new legislation that was proposed. And where, you know, on one hand, I could see such the enticement about it, right? More money into the community, more opportunity for business, the town getting a direct revenue. That stuff is like unheard of, right? That doesn't happen often. And here you are left to kind of make this hard decision. And where we stand is just a simple ask, not even to opt in or to opt out, but just kind of pause for a minute. You will have some conversations, right? You will get some information. I am just one rep, one key stakeholder, but you have your treatment facilities to have conversations with your schools, to have conversations with law enforcement, other youth-serving organizations. And in my work on the East End, although I I do travel well beyond the East End, as I speak with law enforcement, they bring up public safety concerns, like no D R Es on staff. And that's a huge issue and concern. This being a cash basis certainly provides a whole different level of enforcement and protection that needs to be sought after and thought about. If you talk to the schools, they're going to bring up concerns about how they're already underfunded and already struggle with getting good drug and alcohol information, evidence-based programming out there. And how oftentimes the schools are looked to do what the parents and the community need to wrap around and do. So it becomes important as we have these conversations that we really spend some thoughtful time of listening to how this impacts everybody and have a really balanced decision. I'm going to wrap up real quick because I want to respect David's time and everybody else's time. And then I'm sure you all have a ton of questions and answers. But somebody like me will look at brain development. We will look at onset of use. We look at the progression of addiction. Where it begins, we know that ninety percent of anybody who has an addiction begins in their teen years. We know that when we take a look at admissions into our local rehabs, that there are times that marijuana is eighty percent the the drug of choice when they come in. And we also know that that goes back to what they started using with. I know because of our work with the town, we spend a lot of time talking about opiates. And what I would love for folks to begin to take a look at this is comprehensively, this is not about one drug versus another drug, right? If we were talking about diabetes, we don't argue a donut compared to a Tic Tac, you know, or a Twinkie. We talk about the disease. And when we look at the disease of addiction, we cannot look at which is the safer, which is not. Not everybody who smokes pot is going to become addicted. Not everybody who drinks alcohol is going to become addicted, right? And there, in in fact, we know some of the numbers are like ninety percent in in some cases. But what we do know is in young developing brains, ninety percent of anybody who has an addiction began in their teen years with this idea that it was safe, whether it was alcohol or marijuana. They followed social norms. They followed social behavior. They followed exactly what their parents did. And and so all of these conversations, although they're very broad-stroke of what I'm saying to you, really have and need to be looked at from every area and every area of specialty. And I'll stop right there because I know a lot. And once you push go on me, it's hard for me to measure how long I went.
No, I have questions for you, Kim. I think that we should wait and let Dave do his presentation and then have questions for both of you. Okay, so Dave, we'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Schneiderman and board members. And most importantly, Kim, this is really great because we're all coming together to have these conversations. And Kim, I'm with you one hundred percent. As we, we actually should get to know each other because I have some really great ideas to handle this. You know, I once was a lost sixteen-year-old when my parents were going through a bad divorce. And those were slippery times. And I'm fortunate to have had resources available to me at that time that enabled me to become the adult I am now. So, but when we're talking about recreation or legal marijuana, we we need to understand we have marijuana in our communities now. We have dispensaries now. We have delivery services now. So what we're looking to do to address your concerns is to turn this industry on its face. So we know what we have. So we have compliant packaging that's labeled. I'm sure we've all heard a nightmare story of somebody eating just part of a gummy bear. We need to realize when these products are vetted, traced, and they're sold in these stores. And what we're discussing here today, these stores are like a liquor store. You're going to walk in, you're going to be checked for your ID. This is not where an eighteen-year-old is going to be buying stuff out the back door. As far as crime and anything associated with it, there's cameras, strong rooms, all all sorts of things associated with this. As a matter of fact, to that point, I did a little due diligence with my narrow bandwidth here and I contacted a police precinct in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. They've had a an adult-use dispensary there for one year now. They referred me to their. They referred me to their crime analyst, Amanda Steben. And then since it's been operating, there's been zero crime associated with that dispensary operating there. And I chose this one. It was the first phone call I made because it was also on the border with New York. So we were looking for diversion, stuff going out the back door or to the black market. So really what we're looking at here is a zoning issue. How do we find, or maybe not find, but these dispensaries that are operating out of people's living rooms, cars, possibly even playgrounds? How do we address the stories we hear of fentanyl-laced marijuana? We do it through track and trace testing and transparency. How do we address education? That's what this revenue is earmarked for, in some cases, going to the police department. So I'm really hoping to see some of it, whether locally or statewide, funneled into the DRE program, the Drug Recognition Expert. It's a two-day preschool and then a seven-day program. So if a police officer right now goes through, I think it's 30 weeks of academy, what's another week, week and a half? And we can really start to satisfy the actual issue that's happening right now. So even as we're having this conversation, there's probably 50 to 100 people who are stoned right now driving around Southampton Town, many of them who are working, and they're not just sitting in a basement playing video games. There's literally hundreds of pounds of marijuana being sold this week in Southampton Town. So the longer we kind of defer, opt out, choose not to look, not to participate, the longer it's going to take for us to address any of this. So, you know, I really urge to move past this, should we opt in, opt out? There is no opt-in. But to move to the next steps, let's talk about DRE training. Let's start some, a task group, a conversation where we can work with the agencies like HUGS where I'm sure there's going to be mandated relationships about education. You know, that's where some of these taxes are going to be going. So I think we're very much talking about the same issues that murder, the Marijuana Regulation Taxation Act wants to solve. I think we all just need to accept that it's been legalized. And also understand if we opt out, any village, town, or city in proximity who doesn't, they're going to be, people are going to be driving out of town, purchasing their product and coming back into Southampton Town. So it's still going to be here. We're not curbing anything. As a matter of fact, delivery services, as I understand and we've read things, you know, the purchase happens in another town and a vehicle comes and drops it off in our town. I think it was brought up in the previous meeting. It's acknowledged that Schenectady are going to have something going on. So there's all sorts of stuff. So really, as I see, the only thing we're really opting out on is the start date, when we're really going to sit down and advance this conversation and really start tackling these issues. So that's about what I have to share.
Okay. Well, thank you. So now we'll go, I think, to board questions. If I could start, I have one question for each of you and then we'll go to the board. Kim, you talked about the concern of the gateway experience with marijuana and with young people, 16 years old and brain development. The laws, I understand it, is it's 21 and over. You know, so they're, I mean, they're getting marijuana now somehow, some of these young people, and I suspect they'll get it later too. Is your concern that we're sending a signal that it's okay to use marijuana by allowing it for sale? Or do you think that somehow allowing it for sale locally will increase the incidence of use by minors?
Let's take the knowledge base that we have, right? So David, by the way, thank you, right? I'm all, if you know me, you know, I often, I work in the gray a lot. And so, and I love meaningful conversations in time. So when it comes to young developing brains, we already know with alcohol, you need to have a license of 21. Now, how many of you know, right now, how many young people under the age of 21 do have false ID, do present false? I mean, it's a billion-dollar business online on how to get really good fake IDs. So we do know that we are up against that. And there are some sound policies that can help you in that, like requiring two forms of identification, right? Oftentimes, it's easy to have one, not so easy to have two. We're suggesting it, maybe not requiring is the right word. So one, we know when it's available, it's accessible. So parental behavior at home, access in the community, and now with marijuana, you have access both ways, the same as with alcohol, is that you're going to have a retail access to it or a proposed retail access to it. And on top of that, you're going to have it in the home. So you have a home and retail. Once a substance becomes more available, more use happens, it'll probably tick up. You'll have your curious people who didn't want to buy it on the black market, but now are like, okay, I'll do it because it's legal now. But to think that we're going to be able to really do a good job with our young people, I guess I would kind of say we haven't necessarily done it with alcohol. And so, so I would think that that would be an area of focus of how we're going to do this one better if we do move forward in enforcing 21 years of age.
All right. Thank you, Kim. My question for you, Dave. You suggested in your presentation that we would only be opting out of the time. We wouldn't be decreasing the use if we opt out of the sale. And you cited, you know, deliveries possibly and the Schenectady Reservation as another place where people would be able to purchase marijuana products. I heard that there may be another thing that we can't prevent by opting out, which is the retail sale by people who have New York State licenses to grow, that they are, is that true too? That if a farmer obtains a license from New York State, they could have some sort of farm stand where they're allowed to sell some of their product?
The short answer is you cannot opt out of that. The long answer is really, you know, we're waiting, this Office of Cannabis Management, we're waiting for that CCB, the Cannabis Control Board, to really flesh this out. But as I understand in my readings and conversations, it's just that retail and social consumption. So it really comes to a zoning and a land use issue. And also, you know, when we look at this, so for instance, if I wanted a micro license, we're hoping it's a a way that allows me to be vertically integrated, that I would grow, process, and sell the way I do with my hemp products. So possibly that's something that could occur, for instance, on my farm. But also understand that a lot of marijuana cultivation, probably not going to happen on farmland. It could. But a lot of it may well happen in commercial and industrial districts, in warehouses and buildings. Now, a lot of this is grown indoors. So as much as I'd really like to give a solid answer, we are really looking for the CCB to be seated so we can ask them directly and see what rules are promulgating.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out whether opting out will decrease consumption and availability. And it's not clear. Clearly, we opt out of the sales tax revenues it would generate. But if we did it because some held the position, the moral position that, you know, it shouldn't be available, we should set up barriers, I don't know that we actually are setting up those barriers, particularly if a farmer can set up a farm stand and sell his products right here in Southampton. And so you think that may be possible, that that's not something we'll be able to prevent?
So I mean, the retail sales, I mean, all of this will be highly regulated. Actually, back to, you know, your previous meeting where you're talking about the books and, you know, numbers and transparency. There are audits, there are cameras, there are secure systems. They'll likely put in like metric or something, like a chip that tracks the plant all the way through. So there'll be a lot of transparency and it'll be very cumbersome. I really don't think it's going to be just at a little seasonal farm stand. You know, there'll probably be security provisions, you know, that say there's going to be the certain level of infrastructure that needs to be met. To Kim's point and to your question, sure, you know, when there's a consumer product available, likely consumption will increase, just like any other, you know, consumer good brought to market. But it's, you know, we really, again, we want to turn it on its face because so much of this is happening now. Just yesterday, a local police chief texted me with a photo of a vape cartridge in packaging from California, was not compliant packaging. And he had no idea what it is. And he's coming to me to decipher the label and figure out what it is. And it's a black market product. So, and the one way, I don't want to say lesser of two evils, but at least when we start to educate and learn packaging, all of this stuff, we create some transparency and we know how to deal with it. But if we don't have a diagnosis, if we don't know what we're looking at, or we don't know how to guide and handle it, it's.
So just once again, for clarification, so if we opt out, it still will be available, likely at the Schenectady Reservation, likely by delivery? I'm not certain about that. Likely at, somebody could drive to another town or village that did not opt out and possibly at a legal grower within the community at a micro dispenser.
So at that, at that, your last point there, and thank you for the clarification, if you opt out of retail, that would be in your municipality. So, you know, if Southampton Town opted out, I do believe, for instance, I'll just use my farm, right, in Bridgehampton. So it'd be affected by your decision.
Oh, it would be. The farm stand type of sale would be affected by the opt-out.
Yeah, because that's a retail sale. You know, it's very clear, you know, retail sale is definitely.
For some reason, I thought that was exempted from the opt-out. Okay.
No, the cultivation and processing, warehousing, packaging, manufacturing.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, I'm going to turn it to the board. I may come back and have additional follow-up questions, but this was really set up for all of us. So does somebody want to start?
I'll start. So I've been doing a lot of research and I'm finding many conflicting studies as with anything these days. You got one side and the other side. So it's really tough for me to figure out what's true and what's not. So Dave, I guess this one's for you. There, I've been, I've read that THC levels in pot these days is a lot higher than from the pot that we, that people smoked in the olden days. Is that true? Or is it depend on other factors?
Sure. So that is true. But at the same time, when you have your products tested and labeled, serving sizes, and we begin to understand what your dose is, how much you're taking, it starts to solve that. There are definitely conversations to be had about highly concentrated products, waxes, dabs, and distillates, for sure. The flower itself, though, just because something's available, don't get me wrong, people are going to want potent stuff. But just because I can buy a bottle of, you know, 190 proof Everclear, doesn't mean that's going to be my beverage of choice for the evening. I really kind of like a Guinness. And not all marijuana, you know, is all going to be the same cultivar. There's going to be high THC varieties, low THC varieties. It's kind of the difference between marijuana and hemp now. So it's, it's going to be all over the place, but at least we'll be able to read a label and know what's in there. Otherwise, it's really, there's a real random factor associated with this.
Okay, thanks. And Kim, this one's for you. So a couple of years ago, things called vapes came into being, and we were really behind the curve with that. So I guess my concern is how is the vaping going with the kids? And I know that you can vape with THC now. And so how do you think that could affect our kids?
Right. So thanks. And all questions, right? So, so one of the things we've done really well in the East End, study, tried and proven. Like, again, these aren't moral conversations. These are actually driven by prevention science and data analysis. And so on the East End, we've actually done a great job of keeping all substances down and reducing substances until you hit vaping and marijuana, and those continue to increase. So we know that that's a factor. We also know that COVID is going to play, you know, your infrastructure and your health structure is already so compromised. We do, to the THC level question, again, that's going to, the devil's going to be in the details on that with the CCB board. Right now, there's no limit to THC. One of the reasons David says, like, grown inside is because it's grown hydroponically, which allows, you know, for, you know, for different levels. So, so all of these points combined. And again, I think that there's a conversation, as much as there's a black market, there's a gray market, and there's a legal market for this. I also think that we might just consider if, the town only gets one shot at putting this on pause, one shot. And even if you opted out for just a year and got all this stuff kind of together, brought all your folks together, having sound decisions from very good, looking at it from all different vantage points, you could so move forward together in a very comprehensive public health, public safety at the forefront of this business decision that you're making.
Okay.
And I just went around the bend, but the bottom line is yes, we see vapes going up and marijuana going up, and marijuana in vapes, as David showed you.
Thank you. And one final comment. Kim, you had said that we should work with all sorts of stakeholders, including our police. Now, I know we've seen a couple questionnaires from police in Massachusetts. I would like to hear from our local police chief, if we can have that, maybe another day. I had actually reached out to him and he sent me a bunch of information. I can certainly share it with the rest of the board members. But it's interesting reading. But again, a lot, you know, there's a lot of information to take in and I really don't want to rush my decision. And I would like to hear from as many stakeholders as possible.
And I would include your recovery community and those who are trying to seek treatment in Southampton because the resources for both mental health, your vulnerable populations or your youth, your pregnant and parent and breastfeeding, your folks who are struggling with mental illness, and of course, you're those who are in recovery and, or battling addiction right now. And so when you take a look at those vulnerable populations and looking at what resources are there for them already and how shattered that system is, it's important to get those stakeholders into this conversation as well.
Agreed. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
If I could just respond to that briefly, besides the CCB, there's also a marijuana advisory board that touches on all these sectors you just mentioned. So this bill has been very well thought out. And they've had the time to do this off of the experience of over a decade of states that have legalized marijuana out West. And what I would advise on the police chief note, before he comes and shares his concerns, to possibly, just like I reached out to a police chief or their crime analyst in an area where they have legal marijuana, and to get real, on-the-ground information verbally. Because, you know, really to your point, you know, when you look for all these articles, everything's conflicting. And really, the best thing we can do is have a conversation as a community. But I think also, just know that what New York is doing here, we're not the first ones. I think if we really go out to California, we go out to Colorado, we see that, you know, the communities are not falling apart and that there's ways through great legislation. And we really think New York's done a good job with bringing everybody to the table so we can hear each other, so we can respond, and we can build something good with it. That's the opportunity we're looking for here. Because I'll tell you this, if we drag our feet, there are thousands of out-of-state operators who are drooling to access the New York market. And they will find ways to access Southampton Town. And it's either we're the ones who are going to stay in control, the dialogue, have meetings like this, address these concerns, get things funded with those revenues, or they're going to make those decisions on our behalf. And as far as the timeline, I know like a year sounds like a long time in regular politics, but I've been saying this since 2017. A day is a week, a week is a month, and a month is a year in this cannabis industry. It moves extremely fast and it's very mature. So really don't underestimate what's coming our way. And I think we really need to value our ability to steer that as it comes on.
Thank you.
So David, I had a question for you, and I appreciate your comments on the CCB and the MAB. And I have done some of that research. I know Michael Lieberman in our planning department had put together some information from police departments that are in municipalities that have legalized marijuana. And it was actually not really a surprise to me. It was, you know, I went to school in California. I get it. I totally understand that. But I want to take an aerial view because I'm struggling with understanding the law just on its own. You know, so I don't know how to inform myself, except to try to interpret the law. And I, you know, I am also waiting for the CCB to, you know, get going so that we, you know, can ask those valid questions, if I think there are. The one thing I did find, and I still don't entirely understand, and maybe someone here could tell me, is that if we opt out as a township, are we driving the other incorporated villages in the town of Southampton? Are we creating an environment that will do exactly what you suggested, that will drive out of? uh out of state retailers and sellers to those municipalities that may or may not, not opt out of the program on a, on a local level within an incorporated village? Have, have you any information on that?
That, that's absolutely correct. So Sag Harbor Village is its own entity, Southampton Village is its own entity, East Hampton Village is its own entity. So remember, this comes down to cities, towns, and villages. Uh, so this will be made on a municipality by municipality basis. And, and like I said, there's a, there's a lot of eyes analyzing this. And so we need to, again, understand how big this is. So by us opting out, they're just gonna do a map search, they're gonna find out where it is, they're gonna focus on it, and everybody's gonna be going there, and they're going to be bringing it back to Southampton Town. And now we won't have the funds, and trust me, I'm not a money guy, but I wanna be able to work with Kim. I wanna be able to work with Mr. Schneiderman and this board here to solve these issues. Like, just to digress for a moment, vaping right now, so we have a, a vacuum in this void where the state has not released the uh, the hemp extract regulations, the final regulations. Uh, when they are released, and we're fighting for it every day, as uh the Cannabis Grows Process Association in New York, there's a product called D8, Delta 8, basically synthetic cannabinoid. It's in virtually every gas station right now. Nobody's checking for ID. There's no law for it, and it'll get you stoned. And it will, the MRTA will put this, we here, into the adult use program. But my point is, there's these things that are occurring in our community now, and I, I'd really prefer not to debate delaying our participation any longer. I'd really like to know what committee I can sit on when we're scheduling a Zoom meeting, and analyzing this, so we can start solving these issues one by one, because what I just see, I see is dragging our feet. And again, every day, it, it's just another day lost, and possibly another life.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good question.
Other board questions?
There any current definitive tests to uh, to test drivers who may be under the influence? And this probably is not your area of expertise, but if you could just, you know, opine on that. If someone is pulled over and they're, you know, you can tell, but can you empirically test whether or not, uh, you know, they are under the influence?
You asked David?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Question for.
So we have our standardized field sobriety testing, you know, which uh every officer, I do believe they, they do that in, you know, basic academy. Uh, New York State has a, a fill in the gap measure called ARIDE, A-R-I-D-E. It's a two day training for, it's, it's like more advanced drug recognition. Uh, then there's the DRE training, the Drug Recognition Expert Training, and that's very involved. It's observational, they're taking vitals. So yes, to the empirical, empirical science, but yeah, it's very complicated. Uh, it's not as simple as blowing into a breathalyzer. There's actually a lot of companies for a lot of years uh that have been looking for mouth swabs, blood tests, uh, because it is subjective sometimes, and it's complicated, because not everybody is intoxicated at the same levels, you know, it's uh, this is a very dynamic compound, and that's what makes it difficult to regulate.
Kim, did you wanna answer that as well?
Sure. I mean, I, right now, currently, you have my understanding, and again, chiefs can explain this, uh, can speak to this better. There's not, Southampton Town does not have one DRE. I believe Southampton Village does, and West Hampton Village does. Uh, but the DREs are certainly a concern. Um, right now, uh, police can pull you over, they can smell it, they could know it, they could everything, and unless you say, yes, I was smoking, in so many ways, their hands are tied. New York is only one of the only 15 states that doesn't include marijuana on their list of driving wellability impaired laws. And so, so public safety and driving, legal or not legal, is an issue, but we are definitely behind in making sure that our officers are brought up to date and ready to handle this on the street. Blood tests are really only the way to go, and, you know, think about the pulling over of a scene. It would be highly unusual that somebody said, yeah, I was smoking pot, I'll come down to the precinct, and you can bring me for a blood test. Doesn't happen today, not gonna happen tomorrow, just part of the deal.
And I, I can also, I, I, the chief had sent me some information, so he says, there is no breathalyzer machine to measure marijuana in your system, or it requires a blood draw that they cannot do without a court order, or a very highly trained DR, DRE, um, to perform physical tests, and they, and our force only has one officer um, who has taken the class. Um, and they do not see anymore on the near horizon, and it's, it's a very extensive and expensive training program. So that's where our police department is.
In the blood draw, you can get a positive if somebody had smoked marijuana within the previous couple of days. They may not be under the influence, but they would still test positive, which means that the, you know, the tests are not incredibly accurate. I was, uh, I'm a commercial driver, I had hazardous material certification, and we used to be subject to uh drug tests, you know, they would, you'd get the letter and you had to go up. And uh, I suppose this is a state question, and I was wondering how the DMV was gonna handle that. Um, but we don't have any of those experts, and that could be uh, God forbid catastrophic, I'm not gonna wood here. Um, but I am concerned about that. Also, I have a question about some of the black market sales. Uh, David, I think you correctly identified that uh, this is a substance that, that has been our, in our society for quite some time, really, you know, for many, many years. And um, is this regulation, in your view, is it going to decrease the black market? Um, because I, I see it as a, a way to increase the black market. People will produce it, and then undercut the, what's being sold uh in, in some of the commercial establishments.
That is the biggest question, is really, and that's gonna come down to the CCB, uh, and how they roll this out, and the subtleties of taxes, the costs of goods, et cetera. It's a major concern on the industry side also. Um, that's gonna be a wait and see how it rolls out, and I think it speaks to our need to participate from day one in these conversations, to find out who's gonna be on these boards, advisory committees, to form our own, to send suggestions down the chain, so we can address these issues. I think Kim and I were agreeing here, we need DREs, but they're, they're driving around stone now, so this is my one major theme here. If, the only takeaway today is, we need to figure out how to fund the DRE training now. We just heard it from Julie. She cited the chief, it's expensive. Chief McGuire, Sag Harbor, said the same thing. It's, it's gonna be two days of like a, a preschool training, and then seven days of intensive training. So that's nine days, and then, who knows, long term, maybe we could tack it on to the academy training, but the point is, the more we debate opting out and putting this down the road, the, the longer it's gonna take to solve these issues that are affecting our communities now. And I understand, when we make a compromise, we don't always get what we want, but if we can build consensus, that's where community exists.
I think I, you know, and again, I, I think David and I have our errors pointed very, more in the, in the same direction than a way. I, I think where my come from is, how many funerals I've sat at, how many parents' hands that I've held as they buried their children, how many families that I've lost. I work, this is my field, this is my focus, not only here, but across the nation, working with communities. And in states that have legalized, all of the same things that we're already exhausted from dealing with today have actually increased. And, and I think the challenge for both somebody like David and I, and only having a two, two part of this conversation, and to Julie's point, for every fact David could bring, I could probably find one that counteracts, and we can go back and forth on facts. But what I do know is people in Southampton Town are using, people in Southampton Town are impacted by addiction, and people in Southampton Town are dying. And so when my passion comes out, it is because of those reasons. My job is to protect the vulnerable as best that I can, and I'm already up against, and this, and I'm not alone in this, anybody who's trying to do drug and alcohol education, prevention, and/or provide clinical services. We are, our workforce is depleted, our funding is depleted, we have significant challenge up against us, and and I would ask you to, if you switched into your personal hat, as you began to take a look at, try and get a young person into affordable treatment here on the East End. Try and make that happen. It's so difficult to work on the resource side of this, and that is where folks like me, our passion comes from, is because we're in it, we know it, we see it, touch it, feel it. And I, and I don't wanna sit by a gravesite and hold another mother's hand who lost her kid to addiction.
Thank you, Kim. And just to follow up on Tommy John's question about increases in um, using a motor vehicle while under the influence, I think Michelangelo, you had wanted to, I saw you unmute. I know you've been doing some research on whether there's more incidence of uh, driving while, not intoxicated, but I guess it's uh, under the influence in areas that have legalized the retail sale.
Well, I, you know, it's, as Kim uh pointed out, there are obviously data that supports one side of the story and data that supports the other. And in order to avoid that, I tried to hear it from the horse's mouth, and I, that's why cold called a bunch of municipalities in Massachusetts. Again, we're not reinventing the wheel. This has been legal out west for 10 years in some, some states. Massachusetts been the past couple of years. So I wanted to hear from their perspective. And when speaking to these two chief police, or chief of police, um, both viewed it as benign. Uh, in one instance, uh, one police chief said that the rate has, they could say it may have increased, because it's difficult to test, and maybe it's 2% of traffic instances are, are related to marijuana. Maybe now it's 3 or 4%. Um, so it's increased in that capacity, but her end note was, but it's not really an, an issue. That's not what comes to mind. And then she went on to go on to, to further, it's really liquor stores. She said, everything, when I get a phone call, it's in relation to a liquor store. It's in relation to alcohol abuse, not cannabis abuse. And this is, again, a chief of police, um, who in this, in this instance was for the legalization, legalization of marijuana, but the chief of police who was not for legalization gave a very similar narrative that they saw as benign, that it wasn't impacting the community. And when I asked their concerns, their concerns were problem, people waiting online, will need bathrooms. It was all regarding parking circulation. And I, I thought, I found it very interesting and quite enlightening. Again, and that's who I would encourage you all to reach out to, and, and, and allow our chief of police perhaps to speak with these individuals who have been on the front lines and have been dealing with it, and are, see the positive impact, because as they also said to me, their K9 units need to be retrained, and there, and that DRE training is expensive, as we pointed out. And here's a funding source that could, because we're still gonna need to retrain our K9 units, and we're still gonna re, need DRE training, regardless if we opt in, or, you know, or, excuse me, if we opt out, we'll still need this training, and how do we fund it? And there's just one other note, is um, the problem with perhaps delaying by a year or so, as we're all aware with the, perhaps, the licensing with regards to liquor stores, the state is going to have that uh, purview and that initiative, so they'll, they'll be able to determine where these are cited or where they're not. So if we are late to the game and Riverhead has opted in, they may say, well, there's already some in Riverhead, and there's some in East Hampton. Why would we allow this to occur in Southampton? And that we might be excluding ourselves future, uh, from, you know, future profits and being part of this solution.
All right. Thank you, Michelangelo. So I, I have a, two sort of follow up questions, or maybe there, maybe they're new questions. And one is to both of you, that, that's the second question. The first one is to Dave, who is the proponent here. Um, so the board has till December 31st if it wants to opt out. And if that decision is made to opt out, and it's before, uh, i- i- if, if it's done relatively soon, it would go on this year's ballot. If it's done, um, after, um, you know, toward the end of the year, would go on the following year's ballot. Um, we don't seem to have, it's not clear whether we have the ability to put it directly onto the ballot. So my question to you is, how likely, if the board were to opt out, that the uh proponents of legal sale in the community would succeed in getting the signatures needed to force it onto the ballot? Is it a definite?
Very, very high likelihood. Uh, do I wanna do that? No, I don't have the bandwidth. Uh, I think, you know, the, the people have really spoken on this one. The uh, I remember the last week in the work session, there was a survey on the Riverhead site uh about uh marijuana opting in, opting out. And I do believe it was two to one in favor. Uh, I, I really think.
In favor of not opting out, right?
Exactly. So now, you know, the language gets tricky. I mean, it's a lot of wasted time and money on what is inevitable. It's still going to be here, and it's whether we have the funds to address our issues. It's whether we participate in the programs. So I have a working relationship with Kim, and Kim, I've got some really great ideas for raising drug awareness. I think I spoke a chant, yeah, sorry.
Dave, so just really, because I, I do have a second question. So would you say it's highly likely if we opted out that it would end up on the ballot? And would you say it's highly likely that it would pass? And uh, or would be, the, the, the board's decision to opt out would be overturned?
It, it would, with a very high likelihood, it would be overturned. Uh, I know there.
Sorry. So with that in mind, that no matter what the town board does, it's likely to be legal in the town of Southampton, the re, the sale, because the public, and we are doing a survey here as well. So then, then the question, which is my follow up question, becomes with that assumption that it's going to be legal in Southampton, we have to say where it can be sold. So in other words, we get to write the zoning. And we get to say, this is where your dispensaries can happen. This is where your consumption lounges can happen. And I participated in a number of seminars regarding this. The town board did as well, where we looked at some case studies. And one of the biggest questions is, do we take the sale and treat it the way we treat our, like, adult entertainment, you know, like the porn shop kind of things, only in the commercial industrial zones as far from the public as possible? Or do we treat it more like a liquor store, um, or a, a bar? You know, so if you wanna consume alcohol, you don't have to go to a boat industrial location. So I wanted both of you so to work with this hypothetical assumption that it will be available for sale, and now the town has to decide where. So tell me where it should be allowed, and why you think it should be in those locations? And I'm gonna start with you, David.
Well, I, I think first, you know, we have to see, uh, read through the MRTA. There's some setbacks, like 500 feet from a school, maybe a park, public thing. So you're gonna create these overlay maps, you know, we're gonna find out, all right, with a state compliance level, where it's gonna go. From there, I mean, to be honest, a dispensary, just like an Apple store, they're very attractive places, they're very high tech, they're very high compliance. Uh, basically, wherever you have a liquor store. Um, but again, you know, these are really questions and dialogues for, for the planners, obviously with some public input. The consumption does get a little bit more tricky. Um, because, I mean, do you really want an outdoor smoking patio in the middle of town? There's gonna be an aroma. Um, so that one, I think, would be a little bit more tricky than, say, having uh a dispensary on, say, Main Street. I know certain municipalities have suggested, well, maybe not on the main thoroughfare to maintain the character of the town, uh, maybe on a side street. But I really think, you know, taking a dispensary, a place where people would buy this retail, and pushing it off into the dark alcoves, it just continues to perpetuate that, that stigma. You know, that marijuana is this dark, bad thing, and really associating it, you know, with the adult industry and, and all things that are evil, I think, kinda goes against really the, the whole point of, of this bill, is returning this plant back to the people.
Okay. Um, and you just brought up, and then we're gonna go, go to Kim in a second, though. So you're saying at a lounge, a consumption lounge, it won't be like in an indoor setting with ventilators and things like that, or, you know, air control. It possibly could allow people to be outside consuming? And therefore, we should think about impacts to um neighboring properties?
Yeah, so as I understand the MRTA now, you know, a, a, a New Yorker in New York can smoke marijuana wherever they can smoke a cigarette. Um, what I also understand, though, I think like in New York, or at least in Suffolk County, in the towns here, I, I don't think like smoking's really allowed at all indoors, unless maybe there's some grandfathered in tobacco store. Um, so really, there's, pun intended, some hashing out here to do some, some work on, on how do you address this? And that's why I say it's the tricky one. You know, it's uh, what it's gonna look like. Are they gonna allow indoor consumption? Is it just gonna be edibles? I mean, that's kinda boring. You eat a gummy and wait two hours. Um, it's, uh, there's a lot that we're gonna have to find out as it goes, and I'd really love to be part of it every step of the way.
But that is very helpful. All right. So Kim, the same assumption that it will be legal for sale, like it or not, um, what's your guidance? What's your advice as to where the town should allow it to be sold?
So I think this has a couple of different layers on it, as Dave touched on, right?
So I think this has a couple of different layers on it as Dave touched on, right? So you have to be 200 yards from a church, 500 yards from a, a school as laws written right now. Now local zoning can actually uh feet, sorry. Uh, um, so sorry about that. Thank you for that clarification. Um, as, as the laws right now, you can in zoning add more to that, right? So we would love to see it, you know, anywhere where it's not necessarily in kids' faces all the time. And I appreciate that this group, or I hope that this group will be super conscious and thoughtful about, you know, how it's marketing, what the outside looks like as they are in many other areas in Southampton town and business, right? So, um, so we want to make sure that, that it's not necessarily within walking next, sitting next to your local toy stores or uh, like I don't want it next to Sugar Daddy's right here in West Hampton Beach, because that's where the kids and everybody kind of congregates. So we want to make sure that we're thoughtful in that process. Um, I, I totally hear David in saying like, look, if we keep putting this thing in the back alley, it keeps staying seedy in the back alley. I think your, your heavy lift is going to come with just the understanding that I can't smoke cigarettes in it. But in a, in a consumption site, I can smoke all the pot I want, either indoors or outdoors, right? Just on, based on the control of the land. So much of the devil will continue to be in that detail of what the board has. And at minimum, you're going to need to, or I believe you're going to need to, your lawyers and your, your public safety and all of the, your department heads are going to really need to put some good thought into your parks where I can't, you know, it, your, your beaches. You know, right now I could like light, if I was a consumer, I could smoke pot on the beach. And that's, and when we begin to think about tobacco use and the ways that we've created clean air acts, we definitely want to make sure that that marijuana language is included in that for everybody's, you know? Folks who want to choose, let them choose where they want to do it. I don't necessarily want to have to smell it.
Thank you, Kim. All right. Let me go back to the board. And obviously this conversation isn't going to end today. You know, the board is doing its due diligence, trying to best understand this and figure out what the proper approach is. But I, I want to allow one or two more questions and then we have to move on. Um, and we really appreciate having you two resident experts on this issue here. So anyone else, Councilman Martell, did you have any questions?
No, I just had a couple of comments. Uh, Jay, you and I went to a ceremony for those who had succumbed to opioids. And uh, Mark Epley was one of the speakers at, at that ceremony. And he was very clear in saying that 25% of the people that they treat, their primary or secondary drug of choice was marijuana. So that leads me to what I worry about the most in the office, and that is the people in our community. I feel that we are just getting boxed in, like I've said before, into voting not so much for marijuana in our community, because it's going to be there anyway. But more are we voting against taking in the revenues we will need to give the services that our community will need? We will have to up, up the education, up the enforcement, social services. You know, we prefaced North Hampton, Mass as one of the places that, you know, had one of the first dispensaries in Massachusetts. And I did do some research and for a couple of years they had what they call the community impact fee. That they did have rising costs from having dispensaries in their areas and, you know, they had to bring in a couple of million dollars to help out. You know, until they figured out exactly what was happening in their community. So I do fear, you know, we're going to have the use, you know, I love the fact that it's going to be regulated and you know, to me, it's a shame that it just, it's going to come down to, we're going to need the revenues to take care of the general public.
All right. Thank you. I think that was more of a comment than a question. So, um, but that's, that's fine, Rick. Um, anyone else from the board?
Rick's point actually was a little bit of a question, a clarification, you know, in the, in the taxation of uh this regulated marijuana. Uh, I don't think New York, we're going to have the option here uh for that fee you were talking about, the impact fees. You know, I think, you know, the state's going to collect this. It's going to be, and it's yet to be determined how that will be redispersed and earmarked. But to, that M R T directly addresses everything we're talking about today.
Is there research in, or Rick mentioned the opioid vigil that we were at? Um, I have heard conflicting reports based on states that have legalized marijuana as to whether they've seen an increase in opioid overdoses or actually a decrease in opioid overdoses. Do either one of you have any data on this issue?
Uh, from Sam, smart approaches to marijuana. Um, I'll share it uh offline later on. Uh, maybe I'll send it to uh info in the village or the town there.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. And Kim?
Right. We work with Kevin Sabat a lot with smart approaches to marijuana. And, and I think, you know, you can, again, we want to look at this both ways. Some will suggest that um if you introduce marijuana, your opiate numbers go down. Others will suggest that marijuana use primes the brain for opiate addiction, right? So again, um, the data is the data is, you know, it's all relevant to whoever's producing that data at the time. So we definitely want to not think about, ooh, marijuana is going to come and opiates are going to go down or opiates are going to go up. What I definitely want folks to put into their, you know, to do some research in is the connection to suicide. And psychotic episodes, especially in young males, 15 to 35 years of age. And that is something that pre-COVID, pre-COVID, we were worried about suicide and we were worried about overdose. COVID showed us already, suicide overdose went up, right? We knew and that even in the town, we were trending well, and then we started to tick up. So again, not just looking at this from one vantage point, looking at it from multiple becomes really important.
All right. Well, you know, the board has definitely got work to do and research to do, and we'll try to, you know, and we ultimately, we have a decision to make. If we do nothing, it becomes legal. We still have to set the, the zoning in place.
I, I, I did have a question supervisor, maybe Dave could answer it.
Make this the last question.
Just a quick, a quick question. Uh, it sounds to me like you're really plugged into the C C B as it evolves. And I'm just trying to figure out where to put a major effort. Um, certainly it's, it's who sits on those, that board and try to avoid the politicalization of it. Um, and I'm just kind of wondering if you have any other information as to how this actually being created, who's, you know, how does that process work and will municipalities be represented? Uh, you know, across the state, this, it's a big, big effort, it sounds to me. And it could just become, you know, the Bureau of Firearms and Tobacco as opposed to implementing something in a way that considers both of what you, you are both saying here in a way that, that makes sense. Uh, just a quick response to that.
You bring up a very important point that's affecting all of us, no matter where we stand on this issue. Um, there's really not a lot of great information out there right now. Who's what? A lot of it's speculation. Um, so we know there's board of five, the C C B, uh, three of them will be appointed by the governor and one from the House, one from the Senate. So there'll be a little balance there. Uh, this advisory board, I do believe the same thing also. There's room for appointment. Um, so really I think the best thing to do, again, is to have these conversations, to talk these things through. To start having these conversations, solving the issues, gathering good information, working on these coalition efforts as a community to get in here to the ground, uh, to make a schedule meeting with me as the Long Island chairman for the New York Cannabis Growers Processes Association. And I can create a direct line from those who are, are working upstate to, to ensure that we have quality regulators and public officials in these places. Uh, so you know, we don't have this big bureaucratic beast that's unyielding.
Wow. Thank you, David.
Okay. Um, so let's make that the last question. And uh, I want to thank both Kim and David for coming on. I know you'll continue to be resources for us as we debate this issue. And again, you know, we have to make a decision or, or not. No decision obso, uh, no decision and marijuana is legal and we then we, we do have to allow the uh, create the zoning. So marijuana is legal for use already, but whether it's going to be for sale. Uh, if we don't do anything, we still have to put the zoning in place. And if we do do something, when we do it makes a difference in terms of uh, when it would go on the ballot. Assuming if we opted out, it would end up on the ballot, then the timing of the year would determine whether it was on this year's ballot or next year's ballot. So that's, that's, there's considerations there as well in terms of when, if it's going to be available for sale, whether waiting additional year is positive or negative. I don't know how long it's going to take the state to put together their rules. But it's probably going to be at least a year, no matter what, before you act, except for possibly the Schinacock reservation. But it's probably going to be a year before um you would, you, you know, see marijuana for sale in the town of Southampton, assuming even, even if it ended up on the ballot and was positive, you know, was voted uh to allow the sale by the public. Even if that happened this November, it probably wouldn't be till at least middle of next year before you actually saw marijuana for sale.
We, we may well see some movement on the, on the medical marijuana side. Uh, but it basically takes 100, 200 bucks and a backache to get that card. The, you will start to see flower sales there first. Um, so again, there's not going to be a big delay. There's going to be staggered rollouts likely in the licensing from what we hear.
Right. You know, should the town allow the sale? When do you think would be the earliest for non-medical sale?
We're, we're pushing really hard for staggered licensing uh right now to hopefully allow cultivators to get stuff in the ground for next May. In anticipation, maybe that summer by the end of next year, you know, we could have licenses in. And remember there's applications, there's going to be reviews and stuff with the town and the state. You know, there's going to be a long cumbersome process, and that's why I'm most eager to start taking the first steps today.
All right. Well, thank you, David. Thank you, Kim. Um, we're going to end this portion of the work session, this agenda item. And uh, you know, we can always reach out to you guys individually as well. So thank you for being part.
Thank you both.
Okay. Um, so we're a little bit behind, uh, about an hour behind. And I thank everybody for their patience. This was a really important topic we just took on. Um, so the next thing is New York Stretch 2020. Here's a presentation by um Janice Shear, our Town Planning and Development Administrator, as well as Michelangelo, who is still on the line. But we're also going to bring in Margot Thompson and Andrew Manett. Um, who I believe, um, have been patiently waiting. So we'll have this conversation and uh, then we'll follow it by any updates, which I think will be quite brief. And then we'll have the executive session. So, um, Charles.
They're both in.
They're both in.
Thank you, Charles.
All right. So I don't, I'm not that familiar with this topic. So Janice or Michelangelo, do you want to begin this?
Sure. This is um, just, you know, I'll let Mike speak to it because he's really been working hard um with Andrew and Margot. And also our own chief building inspector to see how we can, you know, the idea is to stretch our abilities to create, you know, more sustainable building envelopes, more, you know, and be more and more energy efficient as we move forward in time. And so uh, with that, I'll leave it to Mike and Andrew and Margot to talk about it.
Sure. So thank you, Janice. Um, so as you're all aware, we have our sustainability goals and of course, you know, how do we get to zero? And we have our 2020, 40 goal, and we have our, excuse me, our 2040 goal on our 2025 goal. Um, and while we've been participating in these state programs, such as the climate smart community program, the clean energy program, while we participated a couple of years ago, uh, recently came out with a new list of action items. And there's about roughly 10 action items and one of them is New York Stretch Code. Now, uh, for, for every action item we complete, we get a portion of points. And when we hit a not, certain number of points for, I believe it's 5,000 points as a larger committee, uh, community, we're eligible for I, I believe, and hopefully Margot and, or Andrew can correct me, roughly 150, 140,000 dollars. Now, some of these action items have their own individual uh grant available to them. One being New York Stretch Code as well as the community campaign. Now Stretch Code is just looking at our energy conservation code, our building code, and saying, well, how do we make it even more efficient? Um, or excuse me, more stringent. And while as a leader of Southampton has always been in this, uh, in this regard, specifically uh to hers, um, you know, the state has been slowly catching up. And Stretch Code is nice, sort of saw it was a way in which municipalities could stay ahead of the state and keep pursuing our sustainable and our, our, our green building initiatives. Um, so today I have Margot and Andrew with us. And uh, they've both been uh really intimately involved in this process as we've been looking at our, our town code and how to amend it to accommodate the Stretch Code and how the Stretch Code is going to change our building code. And um, so Margot is going to present of kind of the macro of, of what Stretch Code is and why the state's pursuing it. And then depending on your questions, Andrew and I are here to answer them as it relates to our specific code. Um, but uh, so thank you. Thank you, Margot.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. I will, um, I'll go ahead and bring up the PowerPoint presentation, get started pretty quick, because I know things are running behind. So, whoops, let's see. Share my screen. And then here we go.
I try to tell jokes in these.
I know. Just make sure Charles and uh, Margot is able to share her screen.
Yeah. Can you see the screen now?
No.
No. Uh, Charles has to give you permission.
No, he, he has permission.
Okay.
Okay. Can you see it now?
Nope.
Oh dear. Well, let me try this again.
Hit the button below that says share.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I've pressed.
You have to choose which
Yeah.
There.
Can you see it now?
No.
Huh. The, I am not quite sure.
You're on an iPad, you may have to launch presentation after you
You can always email it to me and I'll, I can throw it up.
Oh, I'm
Is there a start share button that you can see?
I see the share screen that I'm
And then you're picking the screen and then there's a button that says start share.
Let's see. Oh, okay. That's what probably
Got it.
Okay. I apologize.
We see it now.
All right. Let me try and get, okay, there we go. All right. Um, real quick, um, I'm Margot Thompson. I'm with a company called Newport Ventures. We're providing uh for Nicerda, we're providing support on Long Island for communities that are interested in adopting the stretch and along with Southampton, we've been also working closely with East Hampton and Huntington. So uh, Chris Segroy is the project manager at Nicerda. To put this in a little bit uh wider context of the state's efforts, probably all of you are somewhat familiar with the Governor Cuomo's New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Um, probably some of the most or one of the most um ambitious goals in terms of reducing our carbon, our state's carbon emissions. And 40% reduction by 2030, 85% by 2050. Um, alongside of that is the goal of reaching or achieving 185 trillion BTUs of onsite energy savings by 2025. So an integral part of greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and that 185 trillion BTUs is about the equivalent of the energy consumed by 1.8 million homes. So that is a, um, you know, a significant jump. And achieving that goal would basically contribute about a third of the 40% emissions goal. Probably approximately 25% of our carbon emissions come from residential and commercial buildings. So they, um, energy efficiency, more stringent energy codes are very important. Uh, this graph kind of shows where we've been and where we need to go. Um, New York State adopts a new energy code every three years. And as this graph shows, since 2012, each new code cycle has only achieved about a 1% in, increase in stringency or improvement in energy efficiency. And that um line, I took, orange line at the top kind of represents a business as usual path showing we won't even come close to reaching a 2030 goal of net zero energy new construction. We need to be more aggressive than that. Um, comparatively, the New York Stretch Code um is about a 10% increase in efficiency and stringency. And a glide And a glide path along the lines of 10 to 11 to 12% every three-year cycle is what we need to do in order to reach the carbon goals, the energy savings goals, and greenhouse gas emissions. Real quick overview of what a Stretch Code is. Basically, I think all of you know, it's it's simply just a step above the state energy code, also known as the Energy Conservation Construction Code. Nicert didn't develop this in a vacuum. They engaged and there were, there was a broad group and broad and diverse group of stakeholders, everywhere from builders, design professionals, technical experts, energy efficiency associations, building manufacturers. So a lot of input on what went into the Stretch to make sure that what was being required was practical and achievable. It's based on proven technologies, equipment that's off the shelf. And many builders have been using some of these systems, some of these improved or enhanced energy efficiency measures in their buildings already to achieve, for instance, the, or comply with Department of Energy's Net Zero Energy Ready Homes, Passive House, Energy Star. So this isn't, for a lot of builders, they're they're doing better than this already. Again, a very broad overview of some of the changes that the Stretch makes. Not major increases in prescriptive requirements, relatively minor steps as far as the insulation required for the building assembly and U factors for windows and doors. More efficient lighting on the hot water side, some provisions or a provision that would require either shorter hot water piping runs or research systems to reduce waste of water while the tap is on, waiting for for hot water to to come to the faucet. All ducts in conditioned space and that ducts are sized according to AC manual J. Right now, the energy code requires HVAC equipment to be sized according to manual J, but does not not require the duct design to follow suit. Solar and EV ready, not that the Stretch requires actual PV panels or electric vehicle charging stations, but only that there is space to accommodate future installation and also conduit run to, whether it's to the roof or to the parking areas where electric vehicle charging would be installed. On the residential side, a requirement for balanced ventilation, mechanical ventilation, and that could be combination supply and exhaust only or an HRV or ERV. For large commercial buildings, energy monitoring, that's, it's not required in all commercial, new commercial buildings, just those over 25,000 square feet. And then also on the commercial side, a set of about half a dozen options. And builders or developers would choose one of those additional or extra energy efficiency measures to implement. People always are often asked about how the Stretch would apply to existing buildings. And because the Stretch is an overlay of the energy code, it applies to existing buildings in the same way that the energy code does, which essentially is, you know, if you engage in a renovation or or remodel or putting an addition on a building, then it must comply with Stretch. But if you're not touching it, it doesn't need to comply. And further, the energy code, neither the energy code nor the Stretch always requires that the changes mean bringing that portion of the building up to the equivalent of the Stretch. An example would be if someone is remodeling one room of their home and they tear out the the drywall, et cetera, expose the studs. The Stretch Code would not require that the walls be insulated to the prescriptive values of the Stretch, but only that the walls be filled with insulation. So on the existing building side, it's 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 very doable and does not, would would not be exorbitant either in terms of cost or in terms of of effort and logistics. This is a little bit of information on costs and savings. Nicert had two consultants, one on the residential side, one on the commercial. Each do a very detailed analysis and evaluation. They got their cost information from actual interviews with builders, design professionals, RS means. They ran energy models using, you know, recognized, well-recognized software. So very objective analysis and output. And these, the numbers that you see here also should be considered averages. Any given project is not likely, you know, to hit exactly these numbers. But they're in, they're in the ballpark, they're in the range and result in pretty attractive payback periods, both for single-family homes, multifamily dwelling units, and new commercial buildings, new commercial buildings. That 10 and a half years represents an average or aggregation across nine different occupancy types. So, you know, restaurants, schools, hotels, motels, office buildings are all broken out in the actual report. And there are some fairly significant differences depending on the type of occupancy. So these these numbers that you see are averages. Some of the benefits to communities, attractive paybacks, it is cost effective. Basically, we ran some, not simulations, but but went through some how on the residential side for a single-family home, the incremental costs for of the Stretch, how that would impact a mortgage. And basically on for a $500,000 home, a 30-year mortgage with 20% down and 3% interest rate, the increase in monthly payment, assuming approximately a $2,500 incremental cost would be $8 a month. So that certainly is is more than reasonable for anyone building a new home. Also, there are non-energy benefits, non-quantifiable benefits associated with the Stretch Code. Healthier indoor environments, reduced infiltration means less potential for condensation, less potential for mold, increased comfort. Also can boost the local economy over time, really creates the framework work and kind of a spur to a whole new, you know, green workforce. And also certainly, very importantly, saves tenants and building owners money. As you are doing now, you certainly can continue with the third party, Hers Raiders verifying new and or renovation existing projects to review and certify that that building, or I'm sorry, that that home meets the Stretch Code. Interest in New York Stretch, as I've mentioned, Long Island, a good deal of interest, East Hampton, Huntington, Sag Harbor, come, you know, we've been talking with them quite a bit. There's also substantial interest in the Hudson Valley and certain jurisdictions and municipalities have already adopted the New York Stretch. Beacon, Hastings on Hudson, Dobbs Ferry, and Montour Falls. But really across the state, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of growing interest. Nicert has developed a number of resources. They have an adoption guide, also a document that provides model language for local law that that must be developed if you're going to adopt a code that's more stringent than the base state energy code. Training and technical support. We have a, we're operating a hotline that people can call or email into and get real-time response to their questions. Rescheck and com check, software that's commonly used to demonstrate compliance with the energy code has already incorporated New York Stretch as one of its tabs that can be selected. The information about the building is entered into the software and then the report spits out whether it complies with New York Stretch or not. So those documents, either I can send them to you. They're also available at this website, nicertinyw.gov. And I will stop because I know you're all, you probably have additional topics on your agenda or take any questions.
Okay, do we have, thank you. That was very comprehensive. Do we have any questions?
I have a quick question. It said that you could use this enriched code, for lack of any other word that I can come up with right now, for renovations, remodelings, or additions. And what, sometimes renovations are minor and sometimes they're major. Is there any distinction between major and minor?
No, the the code, the energy code, the building code as it stands now, it doesn't, it doesn't have a definition for major or minor. It doesn't have a definition for substantial renovation. That is kind of old language that used to be in the code. So basically, it would be if if something is done, if a change is made where the energy code applies or the Stretch Code applies, then it must meet those requirements with some qualifications. For instance, the the wall insulation. But if you were totally replacing a window, tearing out the whole window and putting a brand-new window, that new window would need to meet the U factor requirements in the Stretch Code. If you're simply replacing a pane of glass because the window gets broken, that would not need to comply with the energy code or the Stretch Code.
Okay, thank you.
So kind of it's, you know, a repair falls kind of out of, you know, it does not need to comply, a renovation, even if it's small, would need to comply.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd like to thank you for presenting. I do want to review this and formulate some questions. You know, maybe perhaps with Michelangelo or, you know, some other, some other venue in the future.
Okay, and I'm I'm happy to send the presentation as well as we have a document that kind of lays out side-by-side comparison of New York Stretch to the ECCC NYS.
And we, we've already gone crafting this in our in our law. So we can either come to another work session and where we can discuss this further and and actually begin to look at the details and how it impacts us. Typically, some of the municipal sites have already adopted this. They're on a smaller scale and don't have energy conservation codes. So they can just adopt it in its entirety and that's that. For us, we have energy conservation code in place. So we have to make sure we're not contradicting the New York Stretch Code and that we're aligned with them. And that's what we've been doing over the past couple of months. So we can present that again in another work session or in a public hearing format, whatever you would prefer. There is is a lot to it, but it, for the most part, I think Margo has pointed out pretty clearly that it does make our residential code a little bit more stringent. It it will, for homes that are under 4,500 square feet, the the Hers rating, although we won't use that term Hers rating, we use ERI, will change from 50 to 54, excuse me, 54 to 50, being slightly more stringent. But a bigger note is the commercial side. We don't have currently any, we don't have a very stringent energy code as it relates to commercial buildings. There's no commercial Hers. So in this case, by adopting your Stretch Code in its entirety, we would be by default, we'd have a more stringent commercial, excuse me, commercial energy policy, which is something we've been looking to do. So it kind of kills a lot of birds of one stone. I don't know if that phrasing is no longer, you know, killing birds of one stone. It's, it might be dated.
No, that's perfect, Michael. I, and I would, I would say robust, it makes our code more robust. And Mark, I wanted to thank you. It's not an easy subject to to lay out in a succinct way. I think you did a really great job. Sometimes I find it difficult to to talk about this in a way that I walk away thinking, okay, I've made it worse than than better, but I I appreciate that very much.
All right, any other questions for Margo or Andrew? All right, thank you both for coming on. Thank you for a very comprehensive presentation. And Ford, we're going to move on in the work session. We are behind schedule. We'll have further discussions on this matter. Okay.
Thank you.
So next up is updates. And I really don't have much and I don't want to take up too much more time. Rick mentioned the vigil. Rick was there as well. We did a Good Ground Park. It was very moving. Even though the weather wasn't particularly cooperative, it seems to always be light rain at these events. But it's not going to deter some of the people who really need this as a, you know, a healing opportunity. So we did have a decent-sized group there. It was very moving. We heard some stories that parents told of losing their their children to opioid overdoses. We had some some music. Nancy Remkus performed beautifully. And, you know, I think this is becoming a tradition that should stay. Hoping we get to a point where there are no more opioid deaths in the community. But I still think the tradition needs to go on to prevent the next, you know, possible overdose. So, but Rick, did you want to have, share anything about the vigil?
No, it was actually the first one I had attended. It was done very well. The people involved really needed a time to express themselves. And, you know, unfortunately, due to COVID, there weren't a lot of hugs going around. But I think everybody there wished they could have. You know, it was a nice night and I think it certainly should continue.
All right, and, and I mentioned before that I'm not going to continue the emergency order. I feel like it's no longer needed. So that's a big moment in in this pandemic. And the, you know, I, we're going to have our first in-person meeting coming up later this month. Whether we continue to use Zoom on occasion for work sessions, it seems to be a pretty helpful tool. So we may continue to do some work sessions. So figure they're going to stay Zoom until I let you know otherwise. And but we will have the regular meetings will now start in in public. All right, any questions about that? Okay, anybody else have any updates?
I have a couple. I'll be quick. The Battle of the Bands is on. Hooray for June 11th. If anybody wants to sign up, please do so by Friday. You can call the Youth Bureau at 631-702-2425. Again, Battle of the Bands, June 11th. So very exciting, especially with the outside number of people allowed to attend up to 500. Everybody's very excited. Also, we finished construction and constructing and installing our little food pantry at Crow Hand Center in Flanders. It's being well-used. If you would like to make donations, you can do that directly yourself into the little food pantry or you can drop donations to Jamie Bowden at the Housing and Community Development Office in Town Hall. It seems to be, like I said, it's being used well. So we need more contributions and donations. So if you can do so, please give what you can. Thanks.
So Julia, follow up on that. The Little Food Pantry in Canusio Park in Hampton Bays is also up and running. Just started it last week. And don't forget this weekend, the Great Eastern Cleanup. If you haven't registered or you don't choose to register, please get out, take a walk and pick up some garbage and clean up our community.
All right, any other updates? All right, so we will have executive session for confidential legal advice, personnel, contracts. Those items, so I'd like to make a motion to end our work session, but go into executive session. On the items I mentioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second by Councilman Martell.